Check that.
Good evening. We'll start the June 27, 2023 Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. Start with our meeting minutes from June 13th. May I have a motion?
No. Move to accept.
Move to approve by Commissioner Francis. Well, let's get a motion on it and then we'll get the alternates in.
Second.
Thank you. Second from Commissioner Levy. I understand Commissioner Bukowski is sitting for Commissioner Bremen. Commissioner Braun has just arrived for meeting minutes. Motion to accept. Any comments, Commissioner Francis?
No, I sent Jim a couple of typos, suggestions.
The typo I agree with. That's an easy pick.
Yeah, I didn't know it was a typo.
It was, yeah, for the map, for the map one, yes.
Okay.
It's the B should be, B should be B. The result of the investigation showed B map, but it's a B map.
Yeah, but it was somebody's quote. That's why it wasn't.
Correct.
Commissioner Levy?
Nothing to add.
Commissioner Braun, you all sat? Sorry. Okay, thank you. Put it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. C6, Commissioner Braun? Thank you, sorry. Seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Next item is 321-325 Reef Road, request of Phoenix at Reef Corp. for 100% release of a $42,487 bond pertaining to special permit improvements in a neighborhood design district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this site is up the street. You likely drove by it on the way down here. Recently converted medical building to nine-unit residential development. There had previously been a 50% release of this bond. All the site improvements have been completed and you do have an engineering email in your packet recommending 100% release of this bond. I have no further questions.
No, thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Bukowski?
Motion.
Move to approve. Commissioner Levy, second?
Second.
Any further comments?
No, I reviewed the email and the engineer's recommendation and I motioned to approve.
Nothing further?
Yes, straightforward enough. Thank you. Put it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. C7, passes unanimously. Next item is 845 Mill Hill Terrace, review of preliminary subdivision plan for open space/fee in lieu recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is a preliminary review of a subdivision plan for a recommendation as to the disposition of open space payment or fee in lieu of providing open space. It's an interesting issue here. The narrative describes the property as is three, just a hair over three acres in an R3 zone and they had a preliminary layout for five lots. Section 2.3, the subdivision regulations provides when you have a subdivision of four or more acres or five or more lots, it triggers the pre-application review of whether this commission is going to make a recommendation for a fee in lieu of open space or providing 10% of the land to be set aside for open space. The Conservation Commission considered this and recommended acceptance of the fee. Land Acquisition Commission recommended open space be required. Subsequent to that review, we circled back with the site engineers and I think there's an email in the packet that you saw, that the result of their further review is that they cannot achieve 10% open space set aside and also get five lots. So if you're inclined to reject their proposal to accept a fee in lieu of providing open space, they would need to reduce the, they'd make bigger lots, basically. It would be a four-lot subdivision rather than a five, and then it's questionable whether that triggers the open space or fee in lieu. So it's a non-binding recommendation at this stage. They still need to make an application to the Inland Wetlands Commission. They're waiting on whether they're gonna, how many lot subdivision they're gonna make that application for to them. You did get a handful of emails on this, all of which are recommending that you reject their proposal for a fee in lieu and require them to provide open space. That is all I have, subject to your comments and questions. But again, it's a preliminary recommendation. It will, they still have to make an application for a wetlands permit and if they're successful there, would make a subdivision application at which time the final disposition of whether there'd be a fee or open space, if any, would be rendered. So that is my opening remarks, subject to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there a presentation from, anybody presenting this aside from your car?
No, the applicant's package you have.
Which is fine.
It's in writing, there's no, there's no one here from the applicant to make up a presentation.
That's fine. I just, question I have for you though is, is it, because you said it was questionable whether there'd be open space or fee in lieu of, if there's four subdivisions. Do we know that if it comes to us, do we know if there's an application for four subdivisions, whether or not open space is required?
Typically, if it's below five lots, in this case, it's less than four acres. So that's, there's no question.
That's all, yeah.
If a four acre is not triggering, it's the number of lots. Five lots triggers the requirement. If, they can't comply with the open space requirement at a five-lot plan, they reduce it to four, it doesn't necessarily trigger the open space requirement. There is a provision that gives you discretion in where there's adjacency to existing open space. There's no existing town-owned open space adjacent to this parcel, but there's some privately owned land that's subject to a conservation easement that's part of the Maplewood Assisted Living Facility. I don't know, I'd have to go back and look and get back as to whether that is classified as open space or whether it's just subject to a conservation easement. There's some public access trails on that site that the residents of Maplewood can avail themselves of and there's a public access path that leads from Mill Hill Terrace. This particular property is separate from that, so it wouldn't be part of that plan.
Okay. See, I thought the, at least the issue being presented to us by the owner, obviously you can do, I mean, multiple other things, I'm sure, but at least their thoughts to us were, listen, I'm gonna do one of two things. I'm gonna do a five-lot subdivision and do a fee in lieu of.
Right.
Or I'm gonna do a four-lot subdivision where I am not required to do open space or a fee in lieu.
Correct. Right. Their position would be, hey, if we're doing four lots, we're not required to do either.
That's their, I mean.
So therefore, their, their, their ask is, hey, we'd like to pay the fee in lieu of providing open space with a five lot.
But we're not, is, it's more of a question for you and your interpretation about going down the four lot subdivision. Do we have discretion for open fee, either for open space or a fee in lieu of?
There is a provision in section two that if it's abutting existing open space, you have, oh, hang on, it's in the packet here. I'm not certain that what it abuts is actually considered open space, but I'll read you what we have here. Says, "The commission at its discretion may require open space dedication for subdivision of less than four acres or fewer than five lots if such property is adjacent to existing open space, park, or recreational land, and such dedication can accomplish one or more of the objectives of section 2.3.1." So it's, you may have some discretion to require an open space dedication on a four-lot plan, but you don't have any discretion to require a fee on a plan that's less than five lots.
Okay.
Can you repeat that, Jim? I'm sorry.
No, because I, I want to make sure we get this down.
I just was trying to follow along. Yeah, it's 2.3.4, whoops, sorry, that's not correct. 2.3 of the subdivision regs, I didn't read the whole paragraph. The whole paragraph says, say, if you've got four more acres or five or more lots, you have to do 10% open space or pay a fee in lieu thereof. The last sentence says, it's, "The commission has the discretion to require open space on a plan of less than five lots if such property is adjacent to open space, and such dedication can accomplish one or more of the objectives of section 2.3.1."
So, let me just finish my thoughts.
Yep.
And then I'll go from left to right, if that's okay. Because I saw Commissioner Ford and Commissioner Braun. When it says we have discretion, does it say anything as far as giving us, like, you can do 10% open space, or does it just say discretion and vague like that, or does it give guidance as to what we could?
No, it allows you to require an open space dedication on a plan that's less than five lots if such property is adjacent to existing open space and there can be a meaningful piece that you can.
Okay.
Add on to, to accomplish.
I mean, I guess that has to be reasonable. It doesn't say it can be up to 10% or anything like that, which I think it says in.
Yeah, I mean, the implication is, would be 10%. At your discretion, you theoretically take less than 10%, but the issue.
Max would be 10, then?
Right.
Okay, reasonably.
So really, the issue for tonight's discussion is, they're asking for a five-lot plan and to pay a fee.
No, no, I got it.
Yeah, and then it's just.
But I just thought it was a, it was, this is a concrete A or B.
Right.
Five, or five, five lots with a fee in lieu, or four lots and no open space or fee in lieu.
Yeah.
But it sounds like we may have discretion if those four lots.
Yeah.
Border or adjacent to other open space, which we don't know about yet.
Right. I think, sitting here, I think that's privately owned land that's subject to a conservation easement. Whether that's considered open space, park, or recreation land is up to the commission.
That's fine. But that's, that's important. So let's start, as I said, Commissioner Ford, go ahead.
I guess, my question, I think, is more legal than anything. Do they, do they just say, we're paying the 10% and then we're not gonna set aside any land? No, section 2.3 leaves that solely in your discretion.
Either or.
Correct, whether it's a fee or open space.
Is that, Commissioner Ford, you good?
Well, I just, I mean, I don't see that, though. I'm missing it. Because it says, "At the discretion require open space dedication subdivision less than four acres or fewer than five lots, such property is adjacent to existing open space." And you said that this is not adjacent to open space, right? Well, that's, that's subject to interpretation, I suppose. But, but if you look back, if you go beyond that, section 2.3.8 talks about payment in lieu, and it's solely in the commission's discretion whether or not it's a payment, it's, it's, it's been, over the year historically, since this has been, it's been about two-thirds open space, I'm sorry, two-thirds fee, one-third open space in terms of the number of applications. But again, it depends on the site, whether there's adjacency to open space and whether there can be a meaningful, you accomplish a meaningful objective by taking a.
Got it.
A very small piece of property.
Commissioner Braun?
Can you, okay, and I'm, number one, I didn't read through the whole thing the first time I looked at this, I guess. So I missed the emails from Land Tech where they said, "We could do some open space, but not 10%." 10% would be, this is on page, like, 14 of 18 of the, their package.
Yeah.
I almost missed it when I read it. It was their June 14th email in response to your email of May 8.
Right.
And there had been an email from Land Acquisition Commission, and of course, they're in the business of preserving open space.
Right.
They recommend it be preserved, and then Conservation Commission said, "No," probably because, I imagine, maybe they figured it can't be preserved because it's under five.
Well, it, it, right. They, I'm not sure, certainly Lack was not aware of the issue of the ability of this subdivider to do five lots and also accomplish open space. I think the Conservation Commission in their discussion just thought, because there's the conservation easement and other restrictions on the adjacent piece, this additional strip doesn't accomplish a whole lot in terms of environmental enhancement, and the $90,000 could go into a fund to potentially do other stuff, but.
So they're saying, in their email, I'm sorry, in Land Tech's email, I didn't realize they were saying they couldn't do it. I thought it was just they were saying, it's really not worth it because it's only three tenths of an acre, which is 10% of the three acres.
No, if you look at the preceding, what they're responding to, we asked them, hey, if you were to require, if you were to be required to provide open space, show us how you would do it.
Okay.
So we can evaluate it, and would you lose a lot? And their answer was, we can't provide you 10% and still have five lots.
So they can provide, and, so it's $13,088.
That's less.
10% square feet. That must be .3 acres. Because they're saying, we can't do 10%, which would be $13,088.
Right. They could squeeze out $11,006.
That's not, you know, that's, you know, if, if that's doable, almost, I don't, yeah. I mean, it sounds like they could do some open space, just not the whole amount. And it is, where the open space would be, would it be at the end of the cul-de-sac, at the budding, the conservation easement that's on the Maplewood property?
It would, I don't think, I don't know the answer to that, but it would likely be a thin strip across the backs of those lots to accomplish that. But the question is, is it better off to reduce it down one less lot?
And I'm also looking at, there's, and honestly, I don't know where Hamlet Hill, I Googled it, I couldn't find it, but I see it on their site plan. It's down by the highway, right?
Can you pull, can you pull up the map where it's crossed? I can kind of point it out. If you go north on Mill Hill Road from the post road.
Yeah.
Towards Mill Hill School.
Yeah.
The road makes almost a 90-degree right-hand turn. Where that turn occurs, if you were to go straight, that's Hamlet Hill.
Aren't you on Mill Hill Road then, instead of Mill Hill Terrace?
Correct. This is.
But this is Mill Hill Terrace.
It's, it's confusing. It's got a Mill Hill Terrace address because this was once part of the Garofalo estate that was all on Mill Hill Terrace, but it's really in practicality of Mill Hill Road.
Where Forks is right before the school.
Correct.
And Mill Hill Road, oh, is it that tiny little cul-de-sac that already exists that has no name in Google?
Correct.
Has like one house on it?
Has like three houses, I guess.
Okay.
May I approach the bench? This was in the, just, I'll pass this along. Mill Hill Road.
It's up on the street now, too.
Takes a turn.
Oh, I was going from that direction. Okay.
Yeah, and Hamlet Hill is this little cul-de-sac with three lots.
Where would the egress be to this new?
Their, their subdivision plan.
Oh.
This is the end of Hamlet Hill Road, here.
It was going right towards the water.
They go this way. They would be going parallel, would come this way.
Oh, yeah, that's Hamlet Hill, that tiny thing.
Yeah.
I see. So it's not near, is it, it's not near the regulated area of the wetlands?
It's confusing because it's a Mill Hill Terrace address, but it's really of a piece of property that's accessed solely now off of Hamlet Hill Road.
It looks as though the lots, frankly, are in the buffer area for the wetlands flag.
Oh, it is, it definitely needs.
That's the conservation.
It definitely needs an inland wetland permit application. They haven't made that application yet, depending on whether they're gonna draw it up as a five-lot plan or a four-lot plan.
So we have, so, and then this, I was also looking, so our choice really is to see if we can impose the $11,000 that they can do with five lots, or something, or impose open space on four lots, which we have the discretion to do, right?
Well.
Yes.
On the, on the surface.
Just take the money.
If, if it reduces to four lots, it doesn't trigger the open space requirement unless, unless you think there's a piece of property within that four-lot subdivision that's adjacent to existing open space that accomplishes a reasonable open space objective.
And I'm assuming that Lack, who, again, you know, they're in the business of determining what's the best.
Yeah.
Open space to have, and my understanding also is that it's good to have it contiguous, but it's also good to have it not contiguous. Open space is good all around, you know?
I think the presumption when Lack looked at it was that they could provide a 10% open space and do five lots. They didn't yet do the analysis after, we challenged them after that recommendation, all right, we have a board that's recommending open space, how would you provide open space? And they can't do so and also get five lots.
And my last question. Can you, I couldn't find, the subdivision regs, thank you very much for including them at the end of our package here. Which one does it say we have the, oh, here it is. It's 2.3, "At our discretion, we may require open space dedication for subdivisions less than four acres and fewer than five lots if it's addition to an existing open space, comma, park, or recreational land." Doesn't say town-owned.
Right.
Is that, I guess maybe we should get some more information on what is the nature of the open, like, I know when they did that whole development for Maplewood, they had all kinds of, you know, conservation easements and everything else.
There, there's no doubt it's restricted.
Yeah.
In terms of its use, and there's, there's a long-term management plan and all of that.
Wirtschaft easement and things like that.
But, but whether that's considered open space or not, I can, I can certainly get input from our conservation director.
And maybe from the town attorney, and I'd like a chance to do a little research, too. But if we have the authority, that would be good to know, you know? Then we can make our decision based on that. And is it possible to get a copy of the original Maplewood approval? Because we just, we've just gotten so many emails from people that have said, you know, I don't know, I haven't been able to really analyze it because the aerial photo they have is outdated. It doesn't have the Maplewood development.
Correct.
I can't tell what anything is, and, you know, they did show a site plan, but it doesn't really show where it's positioned. That, now, now that I know where Hamlet Thrive is, I can kind of see where it is. But the aerial is like, you know, it's gotta be five, six years old because it's before Maplewood was built. But it would be nice to get a copy of what zoning approved before for the whole thing, because there were like a bunch of parcels together, and, and is it also possible to get a copy of the wetlands permit? The only thing that's been developed on all these parcels is Maplewood so far, right?
Yes, this parcel was not part of that application.
Oh. 845?
Right.
Well, now look up 845. It says it's owned by the same people that own the Maplewood.
Correct. All of that property, including what is now Hamlet Hill, was within the state of Albert Garofalo. Multiple parcels. The Maplewood parcel, Maplewood application didn't, excluded this land. It's shown as other land of, whatever. They own it.
That was not part of anything that was combined?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I have a question on the value of $900,000. Seems quite low for five lots, three acres and southward.
It's the pre, yeah, it's not, it's not the value of the land.
Okay.
If the subdivision were to be approved.
Okay.
It's the pre-subdivision value of the land.
Right.
So the land today, and that's, that's based on the tax assessment that's in the, in the packet.
Okay. I mean, I was on the Board of Assessment Appeals. I know things can vary.
Yep.
There are usually comps. Do we have any comps that we can see, or?
We don't, but.
It just seems super low, even without the build.
That's what the tax assessment is. So that's how we faced the fee in, in the past. So the, again, the real question here is, they're asking to pay a fee in lieu of providing open space for five lots.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
That's, that's.
Getting the optimal money, you know?
No, I assume you will.
And then what it's worth. Okay.
We'll go through questions and I'll let people talk.
And maybe, and to Commissioner Braun's question, can you give us like a history? This seems very complicated parcel, you know, I'm conscious of the, of the issues that the neighbors have raised, even with the bond release last year. Can you just give us a brief history, or maybe?
I can. I mean, I can't do it the second. I could certainly go back and, and, and give you all that, but this parcel was not part of that overall.
Yeah, I heard that, okay.
There were multiple parcels. Albert Garofalo was a fellow that owned lots of land in town and after his passing, you know, took a long time to settle all that, but, but this is among the remaining pieces. So I would say that the Maplewood proposal is really not germane to this application. I can certainly provide that by way of background, if you are interested.
Yeah, I was actually doing, trying to do research the other night, trying to find old articles, and I was very interested. And then the applicant, they're in agreement with the assessment of the property, with, with the, like, the $900,000? They're not?
They're not challenging that.
Yeah, challenging.
They're, they're saying, hey, we'll, we'll pay the $90,000 whatever and do the five lots. So the question really, I think, is fee versus open space, or whether it's more appropriate to require them to do a four-lot subdivision, which is one less lot, and then you've got, the lots are a little bit bigger, and they don't pay the fee. So, so the question of value is not germane at that point. It would just knock out a lot.
Where would that $90,000 go?
Goes into the open space fund, for either acquisition of property elsewhere or maintenance of existing open space.
Thank you.
I just, I have it. The date, since, since 1997, when that fee was instituted, we've assessed $1.4 million in open space fees and have acquired 37 and a half acres of open space. All, yeah, since 1997.
Commissioner Bukowski?
I just need clarity around, where those lines are, the third line, those are going back to where the five or four lots would be.
Correct.
And not, and so then around the cul-de-sac, are those lots spoken to or?
Those lots are existing. That's an approved, built-out subdivision that exists. So that was a four-lot subdivision back in the late 90s, I want to say. It took a long time to build out. There were a number of players involved. But that was a four-lot subdivision that created Hamlet Hill Road. If you drive up there, there are new, fairly new homes on that little cul-de-sac.
Okay.
This little piece outlined in red is, I'll call it the orphan parcel left over from the Garofalo estate.
Commissioner Corcilio?
If we decided that the preferred option was to have them set aside the open space as opposed to the pay the fee, I think, I think their position was, we'll just do the four and then do neither.
Right.
Could we still then go back, they made that decision, and require that they set aside open space, assuming that the interpretation is it's adjacent to open space?
Yes.
So if we can make a decision about the, based on the five-lot subdivision, and then take further action if they opt to do it?
Correct. What, with the, the, whatever recommendation you make on this proposal is not binding on you at the time they make the formal subdivision application. This is a kind of a weird situation. Normally, it's fairly apparent whether it makes sense to have an open space piece because of the size of the subdivision in and of itself creates a large enough piece in and of its own to satisfy that requirement or payment of a fee. This one is a bit of a hybrid in that knocking it down from five lots to four would, on the surface, eliminate their need to do either. So they're certainly proposing to pay $90,000 in open space fee because certainly a fifth lot is gonna be worth way more than that $90,000 fee.
Commissioner Francis?
Does this owner, it's OHI or something, that owns Maplewood and this tract, do they, are there any other parcels that they own?
I don't believe so, but I don't know for certain. It's a real invest, it's a real estate investment trust entity. I don't know what they own or elsewhere.
Well, not here.
There's nothing adjacent. They own all these parcels here.
It's just the, the Maplewood and the.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think so, but I'm not certain.
Is there some way you can find out from land records?
Why would that matter?
I don't know.
I mean, I can. It's easy enough to check, but I don't, they don't own anything that I know of beyond what, what's here.
What more is coming? And is, is this parcel directly abutting behind the walking trail and the nature garden, wildflower garden and the walking trail?
Yeah, that's on the other side of the pond.
Yeah. And then, is this is directly, it is directly abutting all the open space on the Maplewood site?
Well, it's certainly abutting the restricted land that Maplewood has restrictions on. Whether that's considered open space or not is an open question.
Well, the conservation agreement requires them to keep it as undeveloped land in perpetuity.
Right.
So it's not town open space.
No.
I agree with you.
Correct.
But open space. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
I have another thought. So we have a few options. We can take the money and let them do the five, five lots. The four lots, we probably need a legal analysis of, just to see if we could require open space with four lots. Well, you cannot accept the money, do, impose the money. But is there a possibility of doing, we should consider, I think, the possibility of requiring $11,000, which they said they could do, square feet. eleven thousand, which they said they could do, square feet, as opposed to thirteen thousand, that's under ten percent, is that something we have the authority to do, require less than ten percent? And are we able to do a conservation easement, or, 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 you know, like what, um, you know, what they did on Maplewood, you know, where you can do the whole lots the right size, but there's a monument in the backyard, and they can't do anything beyond that? I don't, what is the, what are the sizes of these lots? This is, this doesn't seem like it's one acre zoning, if it's that much.
No, no, it's, it's half, half, twenty thousand square feet.
It, it was a DRD, is that because of Maplewood, that, or is it because there's...
No, it's an underlying R-three, R-three zone.
Somebody said it was DRD in one of the papers here.
It has a DRD overlay back in the day, when, uh, again, Mr. Garofalo had a plan to do a, a different development, that was approved but never constructed. Um, I don't know. Lot sizes are hard to read on that map, they are, they range in size from twenty thousand square feet to twenty-five thousand square feet. I would presume, whatever development survives an inland-wetland application, should there be one, there's going to be some conservation restriction you imposed upon that, because the rear of several of those lots are within the upland review areas, so there's, there's a, there's a need for an inland-wetland application that's likely to have, that by the time, if it becomes a subdivision application, that will have all been adjudicated.
So, so our role here is, we don't make a final decision, we give guidance on what, do we vote on it now, or we?
We would just go down, I would go down the line and just kinda give a position. This is like what we did with, uh, by the railroad station, Metro.
Concept review, type of...
Well, it's, it's, they need, again, the, the...
Kind of what, kinda picking our temperature is what we would wanna do.
Well, I think in the past, you've made a, whether it's a formal motion or a set for the body motion, the, the, the regulation is clear that it's non-binding, um, as to whether or not a five lot plan and a fee is what you wanna do, or you wanna, uh, explore other options, uh, and that would be on them to then take the next step on what's, okay, if, if, if it's not gonna be a fee with the five lots, they need to go to Plan B and propose something else.
Commissioner Ford?
I just, in looking at the letter, I just, it would say, it's just, it's, he just makes the statement that the dedication of land for open space purposes in this subdivision seems ill-advised, since the size of the area that would be dedicated is small, point three, you know, acres. I don't know if that's ill-advised or not, you know, I prefer that if they did a little bit more work and, and just provided, well, this is what we looked at, this was, you know, we can maybe do a swing set and, you know, deed it to the town, or, you know, I, I don't know, a little more depth there would be helpful, as to what they, they did before they decided between five and four. Uh, presumably, my presumption is four is better than five, cause that's, you know, three less kids, potentially four less kids going through Mill Hill School, uh, so I like that, and when you compare that number of educated kids over twelve years versus a payment in lieu, it's gonna be far more expensive to educate, you know, another household than, um, than paying the ninety thousand, it's cheaper over time to pay the ninety thousand, so, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know, I don't think I can, I'd have to think about it right now, um, probably fifty-fifty to what I would do. I think, I think point three acres, what does that mean, is that enough to, to do a small park, you know, is it enough to, you know, you know, what is, you know, what is the potential the plan uses for, you know, point three acres, if any? If it's, if there is none, then, you know, just kind of explain it, rather than just saying it's ill-advised.
Yep.
You know, I prefer a little bit more depth there.
Also, just, I just think I did the math, eleven thousand six hundred square feet, which they said they could get, is eight point nine percent of one hundred thirty thousand eight eighty-two square feet, and, and so it's, it's almost ten percent, just wanted to point that out, I think.
And, and he, they might be right, it might be ill-advised, you know, I just, like a little more emphasis.
Well, the question is then, if, 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 the real, I think the real question is, if this defaults to a four lot subdivision because they can't provide the full ten percent, do they still then need to consider provide some level of open space because of the adjacency to the private open space?
I would say no, because that's all town, and when you look at the, it doesn't say anything about private open space.
That's, yeah, okay.
That would be, that's my just cursory look at it.
Sure. I don't mind jumping in, because...
I actually have a similar question.
Yeah, my, yeah, you know, to the extent that they, uh, wanna sense of the, uh, board, uh, my inclination, of course, non-binding, but my inclination at this point would be to go with the, uh, four lot subdivision, um, I would not expect that we would have discretion to impose, uh, any sort of, uh, set aside or, uh, open space, cause, I mean, the open space fund, for instance, is used for purpose of obtaining, you know, you know, town-owned land, um, and a privately held, uh, property subject to a conservation easement, I would not think would fall within that definition of town open space. But in terms of, you know, and I'm all in favor of open space, uh, you know, I think it's wonderful, the hiking trails and all the open space we have around town, but, uh, a small little pocket park, uh, right in here with no guarantee as far as access, um, I think we'd be, uh, they'd be well advised to, uh, go with the four lot subdivision, reduce the density, and the property will be subject to conservation easements anyway, so it might be a better, uh, better fit, that would be my inclination.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I have a question, and just going back to the question I have in the history of, of this area, cause I was reading Sue Prescott's email about some kind of bait and switch, that they had approval from the neighborhood, they got the blessing, and now they're reneging on their deal. Is that, is there any truth here, and that's why I wanna know more about this, before I make any kind of decisions?
The, the neighbors didn't approve this project.
No, I understand that, but they, you know how it goes, they, they made sure of it to make it better, and they put up signs about open space and things, so...
Yep, and there is, there's public accessible trails, I mean, that's one person's, uh, view of the world, um, which is fine, but as we discussed with Bond, they, you know, they've complied with the, the Planning and Zoning Commission requirements of that approval, there's a long-term, um, stewardship easement over the, that parcel that's governed through the, the Conservation Commission, so, um, that's, if, if, if anybody thinks that, that Maplewood is not living up to their end of the deal with respect to the stewardship of that property, would be regulated through the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
But they've satisfied all the aspects of the Planning and Zoning Commission approval.
No, I understand, okay, thank you, um, that's, that's helpful. Um, and then do we have to make a decision tonight, or is there any, okay, thank you. So what, what is, is there any kind of statutory...
No, this is just an idea of giving them, I can, I'm, I'm getting a sense of...
We could stop now, at the point.
Go on, it's, it's...
Be done, I mean, no, I mean...
Their next step is to make an inland-wetland application to, 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 to propose some sort of settlement.
Yeah, I mean, last time...
I'm not getting the sense that you are inclined to take a ninety thousand dollar fee, uh, for a five lot subdivision.
I mean, Metro, we didn't give much because it was so complicated.
And so, I think, and then, the ball would be back in their court, as to how to respond. If, if you're likely, what I'm sensing is, and, and I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but I don't see support for a five lot subdivision that includes a ninety thousand dollar fee in lieu of open space plan, that's really what they're asking you to consider. If the answer to that question is no, then the ball's back in their court, okay, how are we now gonna proceed with a four lot plan? They'll probably revise the plan and then come back and, 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 then you can have, when the subdivision application is pending, have a more in-depth discussion of whether or not, uh, any open space should or should not be provided at that point.
Well, it's funny you say that, because I actually, and, and it's fine, because I think that's the sense I've been getting as well, what I, my thought was, the five lot subdivision with the fee in lieu would make more sense in this case, because you'd probably have, as you said, natural open space arising from inland wetlands, so whether you had that from the five lot or the four lot, and I agree with the four lot being that you're not gonna get additional open space or fee in lieu of, or, or additional open space because of the adjacent open space, uh, provision that we have been addressing. So to me, the extra lot, extra buildable lot, yes, an extra person for Mill Hill, but also extra tax, tax basis, tax revenue, you're gonna get the natural open space from the in, inland wetlands. I acknowledge that's somewhat speculative, but I think, you know, based on what we've seen, I think that's probably gonna happen, plus you're getting ninety thousand dollars that you wouldn't otherwise get. So my, I mean, my thought was, the five lots made, made sense to me, um, and I can be in the minority, which is fine, but, um, I think it's fair to kinda give a sense of, you know, where everybody kinda stands for that, cause if I am in the minority, that's fine, but at least give the applicant a sense of it, so it's not coming back potentially twice, um, so it, the whole, as you know, the whole idea of this recommendation is to get an idea from the board to be, um, as efficient as possible.
It's basically to give them guidance on what their next step should be in their process.
So they're not guessing as to what we have, so...
No, thank you for that, helpful.
No. Commissioner Braun?
Um, would it be possible to get a sense of our commission next time, after we get some more information on what exactly we think our legal authority is? Because if we have no authority, if that's not considered open space, then we might not have the authority to impose o, any open space on a four lot subdivision that's adjacent to other open space, you know, if, but if it is, then we could, and so that might guide our decision, some of our decisions, and also, if there's a possibility of doing these alternate means, like the eleven thousand they could do versus the thirteen thousand, that's ten percent, or if we could pay conservation easement, although it's not really our area, but, yeah.
There's likely gonna be some level of conservation easement, whether this is a four lot subdivision or a five lot subdivision, when it goes through the process. Um, the Conservation Commission, in their minutes, refers to it as private open space. Uh, I think the intent in, in the open space, I agree with what, um, I think it was Commissioner Levy, that, 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 the idea of having, uh, or maybe it was Commissioner Ford, on, on, if it's less than four acres, the, the value in open space is if there's adjacency to, to town open space. We have had opens, we've had subdivisions where the open space dedication has been private, um, that's, Audubon has received land, for example, under, under this scenario. So, um, I don't know that you need, uh, a, a, a legal opinion there, I think that, that can be done at the time, um, it's just whether or not it should be a four lot plan or five lot plan, I think is what we need to tell them.
Commissioner Ford?
Just for clarity, I just wanna, I guess, my, I've heard it out, so my position right, right now is, is like, what, back at point three acres, and is it possible, maybe it's not possible to do anything open space, like, you know, I think Commissioner Levy said, you know, if it's an accessible park, it doesn't make any sense, and I agree with that, just, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more about that, cause I'm not a pro, I, I agree with, um, Commissioner Nune, that, you know, five, I'm not necessarily opposed to the five lots either, I just wanna, uh, see what, is there any potential, and we looked at X, and it's not possible, we looked at Y, and that's also, you know, not possible either, doesn't make any sense, um, so that's, that's kinda why I brought it up.
I mean, is it fair to say for the commission that we would like open space, I don't say at all costs, but I mean, you know, the prior, a priority would be open space, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah.
Of the board? Okay.
But I would also acknowledge, if it's impractical, you know, and there's evidence of it being impractical, then, then I would probably look at, are you want the five, maybe I would accept the payment in lieu of that instance.
If we have the option of going less, on a five lot subdivision, going less than ten percent, let's just, like, let's just assume it's eight percent, just being conservative, I, I know Commissioner Braun said eight point eight or eight point nine, let's just say it's eight point eight, they can get, hey, listen, commission, this is what we can do, we give you five lots and, uh, eight percent, um, and we're able to do that, as opposed to a fee in lieu of, would the commission prefer that as opposed to a?
Four lot.
Would, no, no, five lots, instead of ten percent, eight percent, no fee in lieu, does that highlight, again, the, the priority of the open space over the fee in lieu of, if we had the option of going less than ten percent? Commissioner Levy?
I think it would depend, if it was adjacent to the existing conservation easement, which would be practical, uh, I would agree with that.
Okay.
If it's just an isolated, if it's an island of open space, who needs it?
Well, that's true, like, you can't imagine the open space is not gonna be at the back of the property, or certainly not in the middle of it, I mean, certainly not frontage, right? I mean, but fair, fair point, fine, I, I, is everybody, I mean, does everybody understand what, what Commissioner Levy said, does that make sense? So again, prior, five lots would be okay, open space is the priority, um, let's see, is there anything else?
Consider all options?
Yeah, consider the op, consider all options, um...
It's for usable, accessible open.
Trying to think.
I mean, we...
If I might, it's, I, I think, through the wetlands process, you're likely gonna have restrictions on whatever property is there, whether it's classified as open space or not.
Yeah, I know.
So you're gonna accomplish some measure of that objective, but, um, by rejecting the idea of a fee, it puts them in a position to have to reduce the lot yield to four. So whether that's...
You think, though, that if we don't take a fee, that practically speaking, they're likely gonna be going to afford that?
Right, because, because they can't get to the full ten, and, and, you know, unless, unless you think...
Well, that's why I was asking about...
Less than, less than ten percent open space...
Well, that's what I was asking...
...objective accomplishes the mission, then that's, that's, I guess, it's your...
Well, that's what I was asking, was if people were comfortable with, if it was two percent, I'm sure we wouldn't be comfortable with it, but if it was like eight percent or nine percent, how would we feel about it, assuming we have the discretion, because this is administrative, this would be an administrative proceeding.
I'm concerned they'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Well, they may not want that, and that...
No, that, that's, what, it was a wave, uh...
Can't imagine it would vary to that, no, right?
No, there's, there's...
Do we have discretion to waive a ten percent, which is in the rate?
Yeah, I don't think we do, I mean, looking at it now, it's, it's shallow.
Shallow.
Shallow, okay, so then, that's fine, I mean, that makes it easier, don't get me wrong. Commissioner Braun?
So, if they chose to go with a four lot, and we chose and felt we had the discretion to impose, they would have more room to do the ten percent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we wouldn't have the, we wouldn't have the authority to do that unless we made the conclusion that the property was adjacent to open space already.
Correct.
Which I, nobody's done the research on it, but I think it was...
Well, the Minutes of the Conservation, sorry to cut you, the Minutes of the Conservation Commission refer to it as private open space.
Which, if you go by that, would not be within, or would it?
Well, subdivision doesn't say.
Well, it doesn't say public or private, it just says existing open space.
Yeah, I know, but I, I can't, I know, I mean, I, my, my impression is like what Commissioner Ford and Levy said, that that probably wouldn't suffice, but I, I haven't done the research, so... All right, we, normally this is supposed to be a half hour, we're, we're going on it.
Well, it's supposed to be do more, so...
No, I know, but I mean, especially for a distinct issue, I just don't wanna...
Make as long as you need.
No, I know, but...
It's permanent open space.
Commissioner Harrison?
I, I would just wonder, you know, maybe open space that's not usable is, to me, that's super, I think it's important, this is a very rural area of our town, when I talk to people, they want more open space in Fairfield, e, even if we can't use it, it's still open space, it is, it's used as a purpose for, you know, migrant tree, uh, migrant tree burns, animals, wildlife, it does have a purpose, so I would, I would be inclined to really support that, you know, land is worthy of preservation, but because we can't use it, doesn't mean we shouldn't preserve it, so I, I would take a strong case for preserving it.
Any other comments? I think much we're gonna get like an actual...
Nope, that's okay.
I think this is the best we can do, cause there's a lot of, well, not a lot, but there's some unknowns that are hampering us, and rightfully so, I think.
No, the ball will be back in their court on, on, on what their plan going forward should be.
Okay. Thank you for the conversation. Go on, new applications for recommendation to public hearing, eighteen ninety-nine Bronson Road, special permit application of eighteen ninety-nine Bronson Road LLC pertaining to a three-story addition for first floor commercial use and a single apartment on the upper floors in the neighbor, uh, neighborhood design business district.
Okay, this is a building that was originally built for a bank, and was, um, now, you know, the site of a, um, landscape, Bill Kenny's, uh, landscape, uh, architecture firm, and a native nursery, as well as a small dance studio, uh, they're proposing an addition to the building, which would be ground floor office and two floors comprised of one single apartment. Um, it is a, an addition that requires a, a public hearing.
We have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy?
Move to public hearing.
Second, Commissioner Harrison, any comments?
None.
Needed, right?
Yep.
Commissioner Harrison?
Same.
Can we put it to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye, raise your hand, see seven hands, passes unanimously. Ten seventy-three North Benson Road, also eighty-six... 1073 North Benson Road, also 86-22 Barlow Road, special exception application of Fairfield University pertaining to an addition to an existing dormitory, Faber Hall in the AA Zone. Mr. Went?
Okay, Faber Hall is, for those of you that are familiar with the university, is the former Jesuit residence that was converted to a dormitory when the new Jesuit residence, smaller Jesuit residence was built. It's over on the Barlow Road side of the campus. That's why there's a parcel that has a Barlow Road address. They're looking to do an addition for additional student housing. It does require a public hearing.
May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy?
Move to public hearing.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Bukowski. Any comments?
None.
It's needed again. Can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Old Business, 2500 Black Rock Turnpike, special permit application of Phil Sero, an architect on behalf of Lennox Properties LLC for his 65 foot by 23 foot addition to an existing retail building in the Design Commercial District. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Lennox Jewelers is seeking a 1,440 square foot addition to their existing retail store. This site is split-zoned with the minority of the portion of the site being commercial, the majority of the site being residential. The residentially-zoned portion of the site is encumbered by an existing conservation easement, which will not be disturbed. The site development is contained within the commercial portion of the property. This addition will occupy the footprint of an area that was formerly used for the bank drive-through to facilitate access around the building. There's an existing retaining wall, if you've been up to the site in the rear, that's going to get pushed back about 10 feet further into the site to create that room. That wall ranges in height from two to four feet. The parking lot is expanded and reconfigured to achieve seven additional parking spaces to achieve the required number of 26. There is a certificate of zoning, I'm sorry, wetlands, conformance, and the only relevant condition is they need to submit a supplemental planting plan for that area between the existing conservation easement and the retaining wall, where that area will be disturbed. The considerations for a special permit are found in Section 25.7.7, "As the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such character is to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition character between areas of unlike character, to protect property values in the neighborhood, to preserve and enhance appearance and beauty of the community, and to avoid undue traffic congestion." That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford, you're up to speed on this, Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? I'm sorry, Commissioner Francis?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Commissioner Francis.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Francis?
This development meets our plans for the special, all our requirements for the special permit, and the neighbors, there was no neighborhood opposition as long as the buffering was done as thoroughly as it can be.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, it's basically in addition to the back of the building, it's about the conservation area. There will be additional plantings there. I don't think it'll increase traffic since they're basically just increasing their floor area, but it's not going to affect the number of patrons. So, under all the circumstances, I think it does meet the requirements of a special permit.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
I just have a question. Can you refresh my memory, Mr. Went? Something in the code review minutes by engineering said they would like a deep test hole and perk test done before submitting plans to substantiate the design prior to applying for a building permit. Does they mean before submitting plans to us or to the building department?
The latter.
The building department?
Yes.
Because I think he said they didn't do that, but they would do it later. They didn't do the test, the test pit right as of now?
Yeah, I mean, the, the additional drainage is adjacent to where their existing drainage system sits underneath the parking lot, so...
My only concern is because they're digging now, they're excavating, I don't know, 10 or 15 feet down that wasn't excavated before.
Right.
Like, I'm not, I, and I appreciate Conservation has a very detailed certificate that they got, so that, that's great. So, they don't seem concerned with what could happen under the ground when they excavate to build the basement that's not there now. The height is fine with me, and it's not touching the wetlands, upland review area, which is great.
Correct.
So, but that was my only concern. If they find some, what could they find with, why does engineering want that? And what if they find something, what bad could they find?
Well, the worst, the worst-case scenario from the applicant's perspective is if they, if that test pit result yields a lesser percolation rate than they anticipate, they just need to provide more units of drainage rather than fewer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the session wish to be heard? Well, we have, with executive session, we just have the regular members plus our alternate.
It was something that was stated last, when they first...
Yeah. Yeah, I support the application. It seemed fairly straightforward for all the reasons that have been stated. Certainly wouldn't affect any property values, so it's, it's, got a huge buffer between residential. As Commissioner Levy said, no drill traffic concerns, certainly harmonizes, it's commercial, and going to be, the addition's going to be harmonious to the building itself, so... Can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously. Zoning compliances, coastal site plans, 41 Fairfield Beach Road, coastal site plan application of the Fairfield Beach Club to renovate existing pools and replace pool decking on existing footprint in the residence A. Mr. Went?
Ms. Aragon.
Ms. Aragon, I'm sorry. I know better. A habit.
No problem at all. So, 41 Fairfield Beach Road is the Fairfield Beach Club. It's been in existence since the late 1800s. The current configuration of the site, you see on the aerial, is going to remain. They just have to do some repair work to the existing pool in its existing location, as well as replace the pool decking surrounding the pool, and they're adding additional landscaping. Because of the excavation required, we felt it was appropriate that this was a coastal site plan application, but we referred it up to the DEP, and they've provided us with the standard conditions, just that it needs the floodplain management regulations, as well as that soil erosion and sedimentation controls stay in place during the duration of the construction. We also referred this up to wildlife. At this time, we haven't gotten comments back from them, but what I would request is that you just include a condition of approval that would require that any condition that wildlife sends to us would be included as a part of this approval. So, for example, sometimes that can be, in this stretch of the beach, I don't believe this has occurred, but it, in my prior experience with these applications, if there was a plover nearby, they couldn't do exterior work during that nesting period, for example. But my understanding is, you know, this is a fairly utilized beach during the summer. There's not areas where there's specifically wildlife. When they do that bubble, it's very general in nature because they don't want folks to know where those threatened species are. So, I don't believe that in front of this, there's anything that, that is going to add additional conditions. But as a safeguard, I would just add that you, ask that you add that within the approval. Should you grant it?
Thank you. May I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy?
Move to approve with standard conditions plus any conditions imposed by wildlife.
Thank you. Standard conditions of staff and then DEP and then the future, potential future wildlife. Second, Commissioner Bukowski?
Yes, I would second. I believe that they are doing, there don't seem to be any changes beyond what's already there, and of course, with what Emily said around the wildlife condition.
Commissioner Levy?
Nothing further.
Yeah. Commissioner Braun and then Ford?
Quick question. I, they're not increasing the impervious surface at all, right?
They're actually slightly decreasing it because they're going to be adding some American beach grass at the front of the site, as well as other landscaping.
And I thought I read in this that they're replacing something with pervious pavers, concrete?
So, what they're doing is, right now, they have a poured concrete patio that surrounds the pool itself, and what they're going to be doing is on the landward side, they're going to kind of split the patio construction in half, so that there's a waterward side, and then there's a landward side. And they have, on the landward side, a supported paver system. This was something, for example, that was used at the trademark building when they did that for their upper pool deck. There are supports, and you can put drainage, you can allow those to be kind of semi-porous pavers where it has drainage infrastructure underneath those supports, and that's my understanding as to what they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
That's my only comment. It seems like it's an improvement of the land and improves the drainage, and they certainly could use that down on the beach, so I support the application.
Any other comments in the commission, or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. See seven hands, passes unanimously. That's the last item on the agenda, so I will close the hearing. Thank you.
Summer meeting.